Good evening. I'm going to call this meeting of the Hardin County Board of Education to order. If everyone will stand with me, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. Glad to see everyone here. And Mr. Wise, can you do our board commitments tonight?
Oh, I will try. To improve our effectiveness, the Hardin County Schools Board Team commits to keep children first, listen, be prepared, be professional, demonstrate financial stewardship, represent the entire district, and support district goals, and support board decisions.
Thank you. Mr. Wright, you have our recognitions.
Yes, ma'am. We have several students that were recognized next month, so tonight you just have the resolution recognition for the HCS Better Together Awards. And so if you all will pass that resolution, we'll get started.
Madam Chair, still moved? Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Our award winners brought some fan clubs with them, so we're excited. We're excited to have all in attendance tonight. But Ms. Michaela Moosher, come on up, Ms. Michaela. She is a Central Hardin High School senior, and she is a wonderful student who excels in and out of the classroom. She works at the Hardin County Clerk's Office. In a recent feature in the News Enterprise, Deputy Clerk Ashley McMurtry said that Michaela is no ordinary high school student. The amount of trust and responsibility we can give her goes well beyond what a normal student does. Michaela was tasked with digitizing older records. The goal for her was to get two to three books scanned each week. Well, through her ability to multitask and be efficient, she scanned three books in her first day, so she's moving. She's deeply involved also with the FFA at Central Hardin. She serves as secretary. She volunteers for community projects and presents team projects at regional competitions. She will attend either Murray State or ECTC. Is there an announcement yet? You made an announcement?
I'm attending Murray State.
Murray State, all right. Go Racers. And to pursue a career working with animals. You are awesome. Thank you, Michaela.
Thank you.
And mom and dad and everybody in their fan club, everybody wave and congratulations, Michaela. All right, Ms. Sarah Ice. Come on up, Ms. Sarah. Sarah is a 4th grade teacher at Lakewood Elementary School. She has worked her way from being an instructional assistant in special needs classrooms years ago to a phenomenal 4th grade teacher. Ms. Ice is also is always one of the last to leave school and the first to arrive. She helps prepare detailed and outside-of-the-box experiences for her students, and she has helped lead things such as planning a school-wide pumpkin patch, leading nature clubs and hikes, making corn husk dolls, teaching students to grind their own cornmeal, and make pumpkin muffins from scratch for students. You make us work, Ms. Ice. She possesses authentic love and care for her students and coworkers. It is shown through the extra time that she spends reaching out to families and challenging her students to do acts of kindness for those who may get overlooked. We appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ice.
And our Lakewood family is here. You guys wave in the house.
And I think her family is here as well.
And her family.
Not just the Lakewood.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. Absolutely. All right, Pastor Marcus Dixon, come on up, sir. Pastor Dixon and the Phi Beta Sigma fraternity provide tremendous, tremendous support to Hardin County Schools. The fraternity and a social sorority, Zeta Phi Beta, to North Hardin High School as mentoring groups. Phi Beta Sigma works feverishly in the community to assist North Hardin Youth Service Center with donations of goods, services, and money. North Hardin Youth Service Center Coordinator Leslie Hall notes three separate situations where items were needed for students, then these were met after one email to Pastor Dixon and Phi Beta Sigma. The Phi Beta Sigma and Zeta Phi Beta sorority earned the 2023 Family Resource and Service Youth Service Center of Kentucky Bridges Over Barriers Award for their mentoring work. Phi Beta Sigma members have donated probably thousands of dollars, right Pastor Dixon, to the HCS Family Stability Program. Their work has helped many children succeed in and out of the classroom and break down so many barriers. We appreciate you and appreciate the members of Phi Beta Sigma. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. And Pastor Dixon has some family here and some friends, so thank you all for coming tonight as well. All right, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. All right, Mr. Sutton, you have our focus on academics.
So we're in a transition phase over the next two years on moving from just a work ethic certification interview to what's called a defensive learning. So you're going to ask, what is a defensive learning? It's kind of like a digital portfolio of different learning experiences you've had while you're in a certain level, elementary school, middle school, and high school. So it gives the child an opportunity to have a little agency, student choice, and what they want to present about some of their best learning opportunities while they've been at that certain level, within a certain class or a certain classroom. So we're starting to have teachers over this year and next year start to kind of pilot this a little bit. What can this look like when kids get up and present in front of their classmates and talk about something that's important to them? So this was just one small part, but in Ms. Lynn Gauske's class at East Hardin Middle School, Ms. Lynn Gauske is here tonight. Go ahead and wave to everybody. She invited me over to see some of these career pathway defenses, to listen to these kids present. We got a chance to ask them some questions about their research, and they just did a great job. And if I could bring all the kids over here, I would. But I know just for the sake of time, we could work in one tonight. So I asked Mark if he could come over here and present to us tonight. He's one of our excellent 8th graders there at East Hardin Middle School, going to be heading on to Central Hardin next year. And I was impressed with his ability to get up and speak to his classmates, ask some tough questions, answer some tough questions, I should say, about that. So he's going to come up tonight and do his presentation, and I want you all to grill him a little bit now on those questions. I want you to make it tough on him after he gets done, so proud of him. Mark, come on up. Let you present.
Hello, and thank you all for coming tonight. My name is Mark Carden, and I will be presenting the Career Pathway Defense Project. A fun fact about me is I play basketball for the EHMS basketball team. I would like to thank Ms. Lynn Gauske for her help during this project and many others. The job I would like to pursue is architectural engineering. The career pathway I would have to take to pursue architectural engineering is civil engineering. Some of the major points that convinced me to take on this career is the enjoyability and money. While doing research in the career deep dive assignment, I have learned that the average salary, yearly salary for a civil engineer is $72,000. This is enough to suffice me for all the necessities and a little bit extra. But overall, I would love doing this job because of the creative aspect. The artifact I have brought in for you today is a bag of Lego bricks from my home. I've chosen this artifact because it takes both creativity and problem-solving skills to be an architectural engineer. When building Legos, there is a set of instructions you can follow, or you can make it your own. This applies to being an engineer of any kind. There is a way to follow a set of instructions, but you can also take your own creative approach to make something new. I've used many Legos in projects in various classes. Three work ethic standards I excel in are attendance and tardiness. I am always a consistent student when showing up to school. I have only missed two days of this school year so far. Academic performance, I have kept an all-A, B honor roll in all my years of school. Cooperation and teamwork. I always love working in groups with other people on projects, and to be on a basketball team, it requires you to work as a team. Work ethic standards to improve on. As humans, we are not perfect, so there's always going to be something we need to improve on. One of the grade eight standards that I know that I need to work on is number eight, the standard for community service. Although I try to help my community, I have a chance to do it more often. Thank you for your time, and are there any questions?
So what else other than civil engineering did you think about?
I looked at culinary as well.
Yeah, okay. You know that civil engineering is going to be harder.
I do. It takes a lot of work.
He has ABM.
I liked the part where you can either do it by the instructions or do it on your own.
Thank you.
Which way you like the best?
I like to make my own creative aspect.
So with being that engineer, what do you hope one of your projects will be?
Well, I hope that in class I'll be able to design my own version of something that will be used in the real world so that I can actually make something that people can use on their daily basis.
Like bridges?
More of like buildings.
Okay.
That's awesome. What type of classes are you planning on taking with this pathway?
So next year I will be attending Central Hardin, and I have signed up for Engineering A and B for my freshman year, so that will help me get a head start on all those other kids.
Very good.
Got a bright future ahead of you.
Absolutely. Congratulations, parents. That's exciting.
Yeah, somebody out there did a good job. I think he's good.
Now let's think bigger. That was one piece. We're exploring careers in middle school. They sit down and do one-on-one scheduling with a counselor heading into high school. He knows what his schedule looks like going into his freshman year. He has a pathway he picked out, and he's looking at his future. So that's part of our job, but I want you to think about what this would look like in a 3rd grade classroom, in a 5th grade classroom, in an 8th grade classroom, and then a senior year. We ask questions of these students in a work ethic certification interview, and we still want to continue that, and we're still going to do that. But I think if they have to get up and give a presentation, something that they're really passionate about, and they can share a bigger portfolio of their learning experiences if I'm a senior over a four-year period, and this would be much more extensive than this, obviously. This is just one piece, but I just wanted you to know that's where we're headed. So I just appreciate you all just presenting that tonight.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. Great job.
Thank you to the parents and the teachers back there as well. Appreciate it. Good job.
Absolutely. All right, our crowd's thinning out. Next, we have departmental updates, grant writers, spouse.
Hate following a student, as amazing as that, but here I am. Okay. No PowerPoint or anything. I'm Tanya Vels. I was a teacher for Hardin County Schools for 27 years. I retired in 2020. Most of that was at North Hardin. And in 2022, I became the district grant writer. So I'm just kind of, I guess, giving you a little update, and then I'll see if you have any questions for me. So again, I started in 2022 in the fall, and during the 2022-2023 school year, I was able to get awarded a little over $60,000 during the time that I started. And once you submit a grant, sometimes you're waiting months, or even sometimes it's a year before you even find out if you get it or not. But I was happy with that. In '23-24, the current school year so far, I've been awarded $233,619. And then also, we've been awarded for '24 through '29, we've already been awarded $490,000. So so far in my two years, a little over $783,000 brought in for things like, I'll just give you a little, the John Hardin High School, we've done two things there, added some equipment to their food science lab. I don't know if you know, they have a hydroponic program where they grow lettuce that they supply to the cafeteria, so we were able to get some additional equipment for that. Also, the John Hardin High School library, we were able to update several books, get Chromebooks shortcut stickers and a green screen for the school. For North Hardin High School, we were able to provide additional counseling services for this entire school year, as well as for all three high schools and College View, the Teens as Parents Program, providing materials for mothers so that they're able to finish high school and transition on to college as they become a parent. Reading intervention at Hardin Elementary, the preschool program, we've gotten several for Hardin County Schools, quite a bit of money for that. An early learning bus that's being created right now, so that's a big one that we're really looking, I'm really looking forward to seeing how that comes out. Over 100 document cameras that went to six different schools in classrooms throughout the district. Of course, orchestra instruments, so getting excited about that program too. A lot of classroom materials, band instruments, things for special needs students to help their educational experience be a little easier. And then the new Highland Elementary School after-school program for at-risk students. So that's just some of the things that that money has funded. So far, I'm waiting on decisions on a little over $300,000 worth currently, and I'm working on, I think I've got about four up in the air right now that I'm working on that are over $100,000. So they keep me busy. I ask every fall, I send out an email and say, tell me what you might need, because I just never know what's going to come across email, what kind of opportunity. And sometimes I'll say, wow, that would be perfect, but I don't know who needs this. So I just keep a running list of things that teachers have asked for, or principals, or whoever comes to me. And then if I see something that's a match, then I reach out and say, do you still need this? Because I think I've got a good fit.
She does a phenomenal job.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions for me? Is it more that you're asking people what they need, and then you look for those things? Or like there's a broad base that you're looking, and all these are out there, and then seeing if anyone needs those?
Greck actually does a really good job of sending quarterly grant opportunities that are out there, so that's how I get a lot of it. Sometimes people come to me, and KDE sends out. They post on a grants page. They keep that pretty updated. Otherwise, somebody comes to me with something, I kind of go looking to see if I can find a funding source. So it's kind of a little bit of everything, depending on how much I have on my plate. Like right now, I'm not looking. I'm trying to wrap up the ones I have in the air. But sometimes, things come up, and you just have to get on it and get them done. It seems like it's all at one time, too.
So is there a short turn on some of these by the time you find out about them?
Yes, there is. And some of them are a little easier than others. I mean, it's kind of ridiculous, sometimes the hoops that you have to jump through to get dollars that really are going to be utilized by teachers who have children who really could use this extra funding and everything. But I'm willing to do it and make sure everything is exactly the way that they want it so that we have the best chance that we can of getting funded.
Sounds like a pretty good success rate.
Absolutely.
I'm pleased. I'm pleased.
Incredible success.
So are we. Good, great.
I'm sure, Ms. Vows, as I'm doing social media, if I come across a grant, I'm like, just in case, just in case. And she always responds and makes sure. So we appreciate the start of orchestra instruments.
Thank you.
I do want to add, I think this is really important, the bus that we received, we received $100,000, but that was for the bus. But our EC3 students, if you go there right now, there's a bus out in the parking lot, and all the bus seats are right beside it because they are helping to take that out so that we can retrofit that bus for our moving.
Mobile preschool.
Mobile preschool.
Awesome.
Our grants have greatly improved. You know, I'm an old timer here, and we sort of farmed out some of that in my early years of the board, and this is far exceeding that.
This is good.
Absolutely. Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, recognition of visitors. We did not have any this evening. Construction updates. We got an update yesterday from our architect. Things at Central are still moving along. There's a drive-by, you can kind of see more of what it's going to look like for Phase One, and trying to kind of move forward and start on Phase Two and get all that going. Hopefully, there'll be a lot to take place over the summer, take advantage of what they can when school's not in session. And our Early Learning Academy in Radcliffe is also coming along. So everybody's staying on top of those things and keeping everything on track as much as possible. Anybody have anything to add?
As I said, we keep in on construction company to give us all the space they can for Central Hardin's graduation this year, parking space that is, and hopefully, they're going to try to get that crowded up a little bit.
I think Mr. Stith has addressed that some time ago and is going to stay on top of that to make sure things run smoothly.
That's a huge project. People don't, a lot of people just don't understand, they say, when are you going to get done? And it seems like it has taken a long time. I don't disagree with them, but it's a big project.
I think they'll realize, once it gets done, how huge it was. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. It's fairly short tonight. Financial services, we received all the reports, orders of the treasurer, and so forth. Change orders for Phase One of Central Hardin renovation project, change order for Woodland HVAC project, approval of student accident insurance renewal, approval of $1,500 donation from House of Manna to the Hardin County Schools Family Stability Program. Always love those. Approval of the building, funding and building lease for the residential maintenance program. Hope to see big things come out of that for them. And received information on the theatrical lights and control board at the Performing Arts Center. Received certified and classified personnel actions, approval of the creation of a classified instructor two position at each of the middle schools, and approval of the additional staffing for buildings and grounds. And then we received SBDM minutes, PAC information, and the March Board meeting minutes. Is there anything on any of that that anyone wants to discuss, pull out?
I didn't ask, but I'm assuming the student accident insurance, we're paying all of that like we have the last few years.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's a pretty good policy, so.
Mr. Stith, do you recall if that has increased or decreased, stayed the same? I will take that as a huge win.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. That almost never happens anymore. Anything else? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. All right, and then we do have a couple of action items this evening. The first one is consideration and possible approval of the redistricting plans for GC Burkhead Elementary.
Yes, Mr. Wright's going to pull up a map here. Ms. Polly, do you mind to put the screen down, please?
So let me begin by always saying, redistricting is not fun. We have spent many hours looking at this, and to be completely honest with you, we were hoping this would not be a necessity. However, as we look at the population at GC Burkhead currently, their art teacher is in the media center for classes each day because she does not have a classroom. With the growth that we are experiencing, it is likely that the other related arts, minus PE, would need to move out, such as music. So we have two other schools, quality schools, just like GC Burkhead, that do have space. And so when we looked at it, by the end of next school year, it is anticipated that GC Burkhead would have over 850 students. And so the other schools are not near capacity, so we are able to move some of those students. So this right here is the area that we are looking at, and this area here, if you look right here, this is Lincoln Trail's area. So we are just simply moving this area here into Lincoln Trail because the boundaries make sense. The important things for these families to know is this does not change the middle school feeder pattern, nor does it change the high school feeder pattern. So these students here will join the Lincoln Trail area. And then, John, if you'll go to the next slide. Then this area over here, this is actually Ring Road coming down through here, and this is the area that goes to.
The west.
To the west of Ring Road will be redistricted for Cecilia Valley. And this area down in here is Cecilia Valley's district. And so we're not asking people to go across town, but they will go with the boundaries right next to them. This is important also to note that these students would be going to West Hardin. Generally, they will continue to go to West Hardin and then on to be Central Hardin Bruins. So again, while we hate to do this, we do think it's a necessity at this time. We are also very aware that over the next several years, we are going to be doing more redistricting. But it's also important to know, when we looked at this, we wanted to make sure that these families wouldn't be redistricted this year and then be redistricted again. So we have looked down the road. You do need to know that we have anticipated out to about 10 years. After 10 years, if our population increases at the level they anticipate, we will have to look at redistricting all over again in a much bigger fashion. But next year, we're already looking at the necessity to redistrict within this area, but not these students. They would not be redistricted a second time in that timeframe. So I appreciate the parents who are concerned and asking great questions. And like I shared with you, the great thing here is they're at a great school, but they will continue to be at great schools for the rest of their elementary, and then they will continue to be at the, continue to be a Bruin in middle school and also in high school. If you all have any questions, just to let you know, the total, we anticipate about 105 would be redistricted from Lincoln Trail and about 60 from GC Burkhead to Cecilia Valley. So you're talking about 160 or so students total, which will release some of the classrooms at GC Burkhead. We plan to have art back in an art classroom and not sharing a library and no one else going on a cart. So as a principal who had art on a cart and music on a cart and a classroom in the cafeteria in between lunch schedules, I can tell you, it's not a fun thing. And I cannot say enough about the administration and the teachers at GC Burkhead. They have just been phenomenal in accepting that they needed to do this to accommodate the students, but Mr. Bender simply is out of space. And so we feel that it is a necessity to do this for the '24-'25 school year.
Thank you.
And that will require a motion. The second one that I need to let you know about, if you'll go back, John, you have two motions on here. So right down in this area here, there's Round Top Road, and just, there's about five students here that currently go to Creekside, but the rest of the area goes to Lincoln Trail. So I have communicated with those families personally and contacted them to let them know they would be redistricted to Lincoln Trail, and that will allow us to consolidate a bus route. So as you all know, bus drivers, we have an extreme shortage of those, so the more we can consolidate some of those routes, the better it will be, and hopefully even have a shorter bus route for some of those students. And finally, open house for these students. You will receive a letter in the mail, but that will be April 25 from 4:30 to 6 so that they can go and visit these schools. So I know, once they visit there, they will have a great feeling that their students are in great hands.
And hopefully, in three or four years, we'll have a new West Hardin sitting right there beside it, Cecilia Valley.
Yes, that is our goal. How many years, did you say?
I said three or four. I thought it would already be there.
I'm sorry. Oh, thank you, John. Mr. Stith reminded me. Also, we realize that these students become very connected to their schools, so the 4th graders who are going to 5th grade will have the option of staying and remaining at GC Burkhead for their final year. We are aware sometimes that that's difficult. We would ask that the families go ahead and visit the Cecilia Valley and Lincoln Trail, but if in the end you decide, I want my child. to remain at GC Burkhead, and they are going to be a fifth grader currently in fourth grade, then we would ask that you reach out to Mr. Bender to let him know that. And you do, as again, we mentioned about transportation, we would not be able to provide transportation for those families. They would have to provide their own transportation. And again, that's simply because we just don't have the personnel to do those bus routes. We have wonderful buses, just not people to drive those.
We need a motion for tonight?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay. I move that we approve the redistricting plans for GC Burkhead Elementary. You want those in separate motions, or both of them, A and B together?
Separate motion for each one, yeah.
Okay.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. You're on a row.
Okay. I also move that we approve redistricting Ballard Lane, Round Top Road, and Knollwood Lane from Highway 210 to Lincoln Parkway, from Creekside Elementary to Lincoln Trail Elementary.
And I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right. And on to new business. I don't believe we have any. Superintendent's report.
Awesome, thank you. Before we meet again, we will have Teacher Appreciation Week. And Ms. Polly, I'm going to ask you to correct me if I'm wrong, but that will be May 6th through May 10th. And that is an awesome time for everyone to show their appreciation to everyone who works in education, bus drivers, child nutrition workers, custodians, teachers, assistants, administrators. We just ask that you really take the opportunities to show appreciation during that week. Actually, we ask you to do that all the time, but really do it heavy during that week of May 6th through the May 10th. We are so fortunate to have the great staff working in Harden County Schools, and we want to recognize them for that. Each month, you've seen the items that the students present. That is just a sliver of the great things happening in our schools, and there are people behind the scenes making that happen and in front of your students each and every day. When we think about it, I know with my personal children, their teachers saw them more at the elementary school than I did in the evenings. So they spend a lot of quality time with your students. So again, Teacher Appreciation Week, May 6th through the 10th, just really, it doesn't require gifts, it doesn't require gift cards, just a simple homemade card just saying how much you appreciate them and respect the profession is thanks enough. So, thank you.
All right, board calendar. April 30th at 6 o'clock is the Volunteer banquet at John Harden High School. That's always a nice event to thank all of our volunteers. May 3rd, school is dismissed. May 7th at 6:00 PM is our HCS retirement dinner at EC3 for all of the staff that's retiring. May 16th is our next board meeting. Our lunch meeting will be at Rainyville Elementary, and then the evening meeting will be at the PAC. May 18th at 9:00 AM is College View Harden County High graduation. That will be by appointment at College View. May 21st, school is dismissed for Election Day, and then May 24th is the last day for students. Also, on May 24th at 7:00 PM is John Harden High School graduation at John Harden High School. May 25th at 11:00 AM, Central Harden High School graduation at Central Harden High School. Yay. And May 25th at 6:00 PM, North Harden High School graduation at North Harden High School. And then May 27th, Memorial Day office is closed.
No, without a motion, Charlie.
Do you have something that you would like to continue discussing?
I'm over with, Charlie. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you all for coming out tonight.